Good evening. Calling to order, the meeting of Monday, October 23rd, 2017. Will all rise and salute the flag?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll Club, the members, Councilor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky. Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo. Is absent, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council Vice President Keith.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 16th, 2017. Council Order 17-357, that the City Council award a certificate of appreciation to Joe Maglione of the DPW for his unselfish devotion to serving the residents of Revere for his vast knowledge of the city's water and sewer system.
At this time, I'm going to call upon Council Guanasso to speak in recognition of Mr. Maglione.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Certainly, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here tonight honoring Joe for the many years of very, very dedicated work. In the contents of what I'm going to say, I have a little prepared statement, but I also want to add something to it on a personal note. The type of individual that he is and what he means to not only the city of Revere, but to everybody he services, because he does it with a smile, he does it with expertise, and he's very knowledgeable in what he does. So I have a little statement I would like to read, and we'll go from there. Thirty years ago, the city hired Joe. It became evident very quickly that he was dependable, worked well with others, and had a strong work ethic. Though blood, sweat, and sometimes tears and frustration, he climbed the ladder as a leader within the water department. I know the men that work for him in his department respect him as their leader. I know he respects them as well, has always given them credit for their hard work and commitment, saying the job couldn't have gotten done without them. His knowledge and experience with the city's water sewer and drainage system is immeasurable. He attends seminars and conferences on a regular basis and does what he has to do to maintain the licenses he holds within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. His position as Director of Water Facilities is a demanding one, sometimes interfering with his personal life, I'm sure. Many of us here on the council have reached out to him all hours of the day, and this is where I'll put a personal note in. Christmas Eve is a very special time within the Guanasso family and many other Christian families throughout the world and throughout the city. There was one particular Christmas Eve when I was sitting with our neighbors, and one of the neighbors said to me, "My mother lives not in your ward, but down the street, and she doesn't have water. The water department was working there, and they never turned on the water." Imagine a big holiday not having water. What did I do? I called Joe Maglione. I'm telling you, within an hour, the water was returned to that person and their family, and what a remarkable thing that was for such a given night. You know, and those types of things are so sincere and dedicated that go beyond words. I never had the opportunity to publicly thank him for what he had done that night. But then, after that cold night in December, months later, there was an event in July. There was talk about a construction project going on, not in my ward, but a very, very big project. I didn't have any expertise on it. I was looking for knowledge and looking for someone to guide me. I took one phone call. I called Joe. He was over at my house within a half hour. We sat, he went over the whole project with me. Remember that?
Yes.
The whole project. I mean, I left there knowing more about that project than I knew about my own home, because he was so knowledgeable, and he's so quick to respond and to give me the facts the way they are, without me having to hear that from somebody else. He gave it to me firsthand, so when that project came up to me, I was fully versed on what I had to do. So again, I publicly thank you for that great effort. I really, really appreciate that. Many of us here at the council have reached out to him in all hours of the day. We know that. Seven days a week, asking him to address water main breaks or something of that nature. He's always responded, never making excuses or complaining. He even took calls while relaxing on a vacation in Aruba. I don't know how you got away with that, but you did it. Growing up in a family business, he says, he was taught and learned on an early date how hard work, commitment, and honesty in respecting others goes a long way. Now certainly, it's testimony to him, when you see a water break, you see any sort of sewage problems, you see Joe Maglione. You see him there, he's in mud deep and digging in. You know, he's not one of these guys that sits back in an office and takes all the credit for sending out a crew to get something done. So again, Joseph, you're well deserved for this recognition. (Applause). And you're a pleasure to work with.
Council Rotundo is a co-sponsor of this motion. He'd like to say a few words.
Very rarely do you have the opportunity to say that someone's your friend. Joe Maglione is my friend. More importantly, he's a dedicated public servant that very few people get to recognize, and quite frankly, very few people that you can honestly say are dedicated and honorable. Those are the words that exemplify Joe. One of the funniest things I remember, 2006, down on Fennel Street, I believe it was, they're all looking for some type of turnoff, whatever it was, and they're looking at the maps, and they're looking at these various things, and Joe drives up, and his institutional knowledge of the city bares that than any map that we have or any system that we have. I mean, his wealth of knowledge goes beyond any expectation. I mean, truly. You know, you hear people about being a walking dictionary. He is a walking dictionary when it comes to water and sewer. Truly knows pretty much every single facet within the city of Revere, whether it be down on Ward 6 or Ward 5, or even just the entire city. Truly a walk-in dictionary when it comes to water and sewer. But this is well deserved. It should have been given to you a decade ago. It should have been given to you a decade before that. This is a gentleman, as Arthur has pointed out, will literally come out of bed after just working 18 hours straight, and the day before, working another 24 hours straight, and Karen over there screaming, saying, "What are you doing going out again? You haven't slept yet." And this is a guy who will actually, no matter what, when it comes to the residents of this city, but when it comes to our seniors, he goes above and beyond each and every time, above his own personal health and, quite frankly, his personal life. And you are a dedicated servant, and this is the minimal that we can do for you, and I congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we'd like to do the formal part of the proceeding, and we're offering the certificate of appreciation in acknowledgement of your dedicated service to the revered Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer Division. For your vast knowledge of the water and sewer system, ensuring that the city's residents receive prompt and professional services relative to water and sewer issues, special recognition is hereby afforded to Joseph Maglione, Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer Division. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, among half of its citizens, the second day of October in the year of our Lord, 2017, and the Independence of the United States of America, the 241st. Offered and signed by Ashley E. Melnick, City Clerk, signed by Patrick M. Keith, Council Vice President. Motion offered by Councilors Guanasso and Rotundo. Congratulations.[579.62][579.62](Applause).
I'm in the two good guys. You have the recipient, you both.
Joe would like to say a few words, too.
I'd like to thank all the councilors, especially the makers of the motion. I'd like to thank my family for putting up with me at all hours of the night and leaving them at different times. I'd like to especially thank the late Bob Haz for having the faith in me to give my position some 20 years ago, and I want to thank everybody that came here and my support. Thank you very much. Also, I want to thank the men that work beside me underneath my supervision, because I couldn't do anything without them. Thank you. Thank you.
Council Order 17-359, that the City Council award a certificate of merit to the family of retired First Lieutenant Dennis Russo for over 30 years of service to the city of Revere.
Council Rotundo?
Thank you. I'm sure many of you know Lieutenant Russo. This is a man who's dedicated his life to the city of Revere, both as a firefighter and as an EMT. There is no greater reward than to present this certificate of merit to Lieutenant Russo, but more importantly, people need to understand, 30 years dedicating your life to taking care of others, it's a long, long time, and the stresses of being a firefighter, aside from the physical aspects, are the simplest part of it. The emotional part of it is far greater than you can think. You know, most people don't realize it, but whether you're going on a call for a motor vehicle accident, or a kid falling off his bicycle, and today sadly, due to addiction, those tend to be one of the greater calls that we deal with, or shall I say Lieutenant Russo had dealt with. So may I read this and bestow you the honor, of course. "An acknowledgement of extraordinary, distinguished, and meritorious achievement and accomplishment, special recognition is hereby accorded to Lieutenant Dennis Russo and your family. City of Revere Fire Department, in recognition of your retirement from 34 years of commendable public service on the City of Revere Fire Department, and in which during your service you exhibited the courage to act, the ability to perform, and desire to serve above and beyond the call of duty to protect and serve the residents of the city of Revere. And whereas Lieutenant Russo and your family have sacrificed so much, and many precious hours of family time over the course of your career to ensure the safety of Revere residents, therefore, this certificate of merit is accorded to you thereto. And witness where Rob, this certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the mayor and city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 23rd day of October in the year of our Lord, 2017, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 241st and 41st. I appoint this to you."
Thank you very much. I just want to say it was my pleasure helping the people of the city. Thank you.
Council Order 17-375, communication from the mayor and from HYM Investments relative to the bid for Amazon HQ2.
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. As you're all aware, the city of Revere has partnered with the city of Boston to respond to the Amazon HQ2 RFP. I hope you've all had some time to take a look through our proposal. I know it's been, it's not the first time that we've been through this kind of high-publicity But what I want to convey to you tonight, as I stand here before you, is to say that the future of Revere is not being placed on hold in the hopes of winning this competition. We look at this bid as a win-win for our city and for our residents, whatever Amazon may decide. As you've heard me say a few times before, for decades, our economy was based on the Suffolk Downs horse track and the Wonderland dog track. We now have a transformative opportunity in Revere as we look to turn a 20th century racetrack-focused economy to a 21st century economy filled with promise. With your support, my administration rezoned the Neco site to be the home of robotics, advanced manufacturing, and life sciences. Suffolk Downs holds the potential to be the next site in our city's transition. Make no mistake, we hope it's Amazon, and we hope that Amazon does come to Suffolk Downs. But this is not an all-in bet. We are not putting all of our eggs in one basket. Regardless of Amazon's decision, bringing new life to Suffolk Downs will be part of our future success. As our proposal outlines, Amazon, or any commercial entity for that matter, would be hard-pressed to find a better location than Suffolk Downs. Our proposal showcases the 161-acre shovel-ready, single-ownership greenfield site, the two MBTA stops, the fact that it's a five-minute walk away from America's first public beach, a five-minute T-Ride to the airport, and minutes away from the best colleges and universities in the world. Site lives in two communities that feature rich culture, diversity, and a talent pool to match. The process for planning our city's future and the future of Suffolk Downs is not stopping because of Amazon. We are in ongoing conversations with HYM about the process from here and how we can move, both with the speed necessary if Amazon does select us, and with similar urgency, even if they do not. What I also love about our proposal, in looking at some of the proposals that have been put forward, is how we display a united and collaborative political environment. Big city and small, City Hall and State House, Democrat and Republican, public sector and private, we're all pulling in the same direction. There is a very real reason to believe that our positive political environment is a key benefit to what Revere, Boston, and the Commonwealth will have to offer. Tom O'Brien from HYM is here tonight, and he is going to discuss some of the more particular details of our Amazon proposal. And he'll walk you through the two options for Amazon Phase 1, one of which would be at Beauchamp. He'll show you the outdoor theater, the parks, and parks that will be located in Revere, as well as ground floor retail and innovation center, and all the benefits that accompany those elements. If eight million square feet of commercial development is coming to Suffolk Downs, a healthy amount of that will be on the Revere side. Also in the proposal are details of potential state investments, including $40 million in improvements on Route 1A, $25 million investment for a commuter rail station at Wonderland, and the potential investment in the Red Line-Blu Line connection, which will create an easier link between Revere and Kendall Square. You'll also note that the Wonderland, both the Wonderland and Neco properties, are featured as supportive development sites. Other cities and towns around the country threw out big incentives, including putting up orange lights, delivering a cactus, tweeting funny lines about Amazon, or even offering to change the name of their city. Our proposal stands on its own, not gimmicks. We have an unmatched site with unmatched transportation, talent, and amenities that nobody else can offer. Yes, when the conversation of incentives does come up, we will be at the table. That is not going to be the strength of our argument, nor will it be a deal breaker. The strength of our argument will be that the greater Boston area is the only place to be, and that is outlined in our proposal. With that, I will now ask Tom O'Brien to come up from HYM. The council knows and respects Tom. I will be sticking around for any further questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for inviting me back. I appreciate it. It's good to be back in front of you. It's an honor to be back before this body. I would just say to the folks who are running the Revere TV, we can go to the slideshow if you'd like. That's what I had planned to kind of work off of, if that's okay. I think hopefully you got that. Great, okay. So folks, councilors, you can kind of see what's happening in here. This is a great opportunity, as the mayor said, for us to kind of give you an update of the work that we've put into this over the last number of weeks. As we said last time, we were all together. We are the HYM Investment Group, myself, my name is Tom O'Brien. I want to point out my partner Doug Manz, who's in the back of the room, Dino DeFranzo, who does work with us on community engagement and things like that. We are the owners of the site, so what's really important and different about us is we represent ourselves. We don't hire people who come in and sort of do our talking for us. We represent ourselves. We're here, ready to answer your questions and think things through with you. We acquired the site, as we said to you in the very beginning of, oh, there we go. We acquired, these slides don't show up very well for you guys, but I'll talk it through. We acquired the site in May of this year, May of 2017, and our vision for the site, which is the same today as it was the day that we acquired it, is that this would be a mixed-use site. We think of this as a really great opportunity to create a mix of uses on this site that will be a wonderful chance for people to have a great place to eat a meal, have a great place to perhaps work, perhaps be a place where they can walk down the street and shop and things like that, certainly be a place where people can live as well, but a mix of uses, that's the key thing. We focused on that from the very beginning, and where we are today, as I said, is the same as where we are, you know, when we first took this on. A little bit about us, you folks, the councilors know us, this is maybe more for folks here in the audience. HYM is an entity that is focused on a variety of different projects around Boston. We're highly experienced in these kinds of large, complicated transactions. We're the people who took on the development of North Point. North Point is a 45-acre site located partly in Cambridge, partly in Boston, and partly in Somerville. We took that on and got the permits in place, made sure that that project could be on track, started a group of buildings, started the parks, the streets, all those different things. We're still on that project as we go right now. In addition to that, we're also the people on the New Balance Development along the Pike, as you drive in from the Pike. So we completed the new Bruins practice facility, as well as the office building there. We are also now completing a residential building there on that site, so we continue to move forward on that. And we are the redevelopers of the Government Center Garage, which is the big ugly garage in downtown Boston. We've started that project already with the development of a new residential and mixed-use project right at the corner, closest to where the police station is on New Sudbury Street, if people can remember where that is. We're excited to be part of the group that's going to transform that garage and lead that group to make it, you know, the implementation of those buildings a reality. We're really excited about that project. A little bit more, some of the buildings that we've done, these are some of the buildings that you folks, I think, all know about us. We've now met a number of times, so you know us fairly well. But from 2020 at North Point to Waterside Place in the Seaport District, to the building that I just described at Boston Landing, these are all projects that we're very proud of and feel good about. As I said, we acquired Suffolk Downs in May of this year. We actually really began working on it months before. We spent a ton of time on this project, really thinking about what's required, how to move the site into a position where it can move forward. We're really excited about the fact that this site can be put together in a way that can really change, as the mayor said, how this site has been viewed in so many ways. It's going to take it from a horse racing track that was kind of part of the economy of the past and put it into a position where it can be a much better contributor to this city and to this community of East Boston. We've assembled a great team, as we see here. HYM, that's us, we're the folks who lead the team. CBT is the architect, they're based in Boston, master planning architect. In addition to that, we have STAS. STAS is a Boston-based landscape architect. They have a great specialty in landscape and managing water on sites like this. PCA is Prelova Chalinski, they're a retail architect, terrific job in creating a great retail environment. VHB, Beals &amp; Thomas, we've got a variety of other professionals who are part of this team. It's a very strong team that is going to work together with us to deliver a really great opportunity, we think. Here's our vision for the site. We think the site, as we said, can be a mixed-use site. We look at it and we say, it's big, obviously. It's big compared to a variety of other sites, you know, that are available in Boston. It's connected to downtown by the Blue Line, but it also really can be a great place where we can build, as we said, great streets. That's really what makes these kinds of projects work well. In the past, we've talked, some of us individually, about comparisons on a site like this, and some of you have said, and we've sort of agreed, that other successful areas around town, for example, Assembly Row, exhibit great streets, great shopping areas, great restaurants, still with some residential above, now with commercial, all those different pieces. So we think those are the kinds of things, we think we can do a better job than what's been done at Assembly Row, I kind of say with a smile, but that's the kind of thing that we want to replicate. The idea that these are streets that people can walk down, have a great meal, go shopping, all those pieces are what we're after. In addition to that, we want to make sure that there are a variety of different opportunities for people to be outside, for there to be open space chances for people. These are different slides that are kind of hard to see from where you are. The open space should have a variety of characteristics. With or without Amazon, what I said to you last time I was here in front of you is still the same. We think we can produce 40 acres of open space, four zero acres of open space, that's 25% of the entire site. The open space will have a variety of different opportunities for active space, for passive space, for people to sit and read a book, or have playing fields, or things like that. We, you know, we think of the open space as well as having dog park characters, I mean, there's a variety of different things that we could bring to it. The Blue Line is a key part of where we, you know, why we think the site can be successful. There's a variety of different pieces that we, you know, the way we think of how people will get to the site, but the most important thing is the Blue Line. The Blue Line is really our front door for the site, for both Beauchamp and for the Suffolk Downs T-Stop. As the mayor said, we've thought carefully about how we can make use of the Beauchamp Station. There's a variety of things I'm going to talk about in a second at Beauchamp, but we really are excited about the Beauchamp Station and what that can mean for us as we kick off the development of the site. I talked about water, and certainly sustainability and climate change, these are major issues for us, but we're really fortunate in that when you think about cities that are dealing with climate change and the potential of infiltration of water, most cities are dealing with how to manage the built environment. We have an opportunity here from the get-go to build in the system that will help us to manage water and water infiltration, which is our plan as we move forward. The Amazon proposal. So it's really based upon the fact that there are two Blue Line stations, as I said, and as you can see here, we today, as an example, took a member of the press who didn't believe us when I said it will take you 12 minutes to get from the State Street stop in downtown Boston to Suffolk Downs. It took us 12 minutes, so we were able to prove that out, which was terrific, and I was happy that he agreed to take the Blue Line with me. But the Blue Line stations are really part of the key to us, and we think- But the Blue Line stations are really part of the key to us, and we think frankly, Amazon, remember, I apologize, I'm dealing with a cold, so if my voice cracks a little bit, it's trying to deal with it. But Amazon, remember, in the very beginning, when they released this RFP on September the seventh, I think it was, they said that they wanted to be close to an international airport. They said they wanted to be in a community with a million people. They said they wanted to be in a site that could have a hundred acres. They wanted to be able to build eight million square feet. And so frankly, as we looked around, we said to ourselves, well, Boston checks off just about everything that's here. Boston and Revere together. Thank you, councillor, I see you reaching this to me. Boston and Revere together check off all those boxes, and there's only one site in greater Boston, thank you very much. There's only one site in greater Boston that can make this all work, and that's Suffolk Downs. And fortunately, Mayor Rego clearly understood the vision behind that. Mayor Walsh clearly understood the vision behind that. We think the governor frankly, after all is said and done, is going to understand the vision of this. And so we think we prepared something that's really, really strong. And the most important thing to think about right now is now we're playing for the next stage of this. This is not just about Suffolk Downs versus other sites in the greater Boston area. This is about Suffolk Downs versus Austin, Suffolk Downs versus New York, Suffolk Downs versus Nashville, Tennessee, all those places. And that's where the unification, I think those pieces are really what's going to become important to us. So here it gives you a little bit more of a site. Again, you know, the basic building blocks for us, open space, the forty acres of open space, we're holding tight to that. The fact that the Blue Line can be our, you know, our front door, those are all pieces that are key for us. The other piece that's important to us is Amazon also asked for a first phase. They asked for a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot building delivered by two thousand nineteen. So we sat back and we said, okay, well, we've got two Blue Line stations. We think there's two different opportunities for, you know, for first phases. And really, under the mayor's leadership, we kind of said, okay, this is going to be an opportunity for us to offer either a Phase One at Suffolk Downs Station in East Boston or Phase One at Beauchamp in Revere. Either way, obviously, at the end of the day, it's Amazon's choice, but we presented that in the application. Really, we feel really good, very proud about what we've done. In addition to that, as Mayor Rego said, we think that there can be a great opportunity for an entrepreneurship center at Beauchamp Station. So building a sense of job creation, a sense of sharing of information, a sense that there can be new companies and new ideas that can be spawned around Beauchamp Station, particularly around the presence of a technology company, that's a huge opportunity for us, together with the restaurants, coffee shops, other shops that can be right around on that stretch. We're really excited about that from a mixed-use opportunity. And here it just gives you a sense of what these squares can look like. Beauchamp Square, you know, we sort of, you'll help us make sure that we, if it wants to be Beauchamp Square or a piece of Beauchamp, you'll help us make sure that we get that right, in your opinion. Bellou Square, similar kind of thing as to how we've lined this up. And so these are all drawings that give you a sense of where we are. In addition, these are some slides that we put in about climate change. These are hard to see from where you are, but we put in a very thorough, very thorough proposal, I think. I mean frankly, when I went through this weekend and I thought about all the different pieces that have been presented from other cities, we were able to compile all the other places that have already responded. I'm not sure we looked at everything. I think I saw today that Amazon got two-hundred-and-thirty-eight proposals, but we looked at the key ones in New York and Atlanta and places like that. I have to tell you, I think we did a great job, and it was under the leadership of the two mayors, you know, at the end of the day, Mayor Rego and Mayor Walsh, who really put this thing together and put us in a good position. So we're excited, very excited to be back here with you, and let me just repeat one more thing. With or without Amazon, we're still doing the same mixed-use development. Amazon came crashing into our process on September seventh. We did the best we could to chase and put something together that would be attractive to them, but we're the same developers, same team, same site, same vision, with or without Amazon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A very nice presentation. Any councilors wishing to ask the questions? Council Guanasso?
The only thing I can say about Tom O'Brien is that he's a first-class act. He's met with me a few times now in reference to the development. He's brought me right up to date, just like he stated earlier. When you deal with people like him and Dino, that they come forward to make their presentation, they give you an informal session, they answer each and every question you might have. What else can you ask for from a developer? And he's the type of individual, and his firm is what we're looking for and forward to working with in our community for many years to come. And Tom, again, great presentation as usual, and we know we can't lose in this process, whether it be Amazon or Assembly Row, whatever it is, the city of Revere is going to be very beneficial from this for many years to come. And, you know, and a lot of people don't understand, this is a multi-year effort in the beginning, so this isn't going to happen overnight, but this is a wonderful project for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Guanasso. Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I guess, restate that, first of all, I'm happy that we offered a proposal and, you know, I'm optimistic that we have a good shot, but as this gentleman said, you know, I'm very comfortable whatever's going to happen. We are, as a city, and I never, I don't think I've ever said this before, we are very lucky to have this company as the developer of Suffolk Downs. Their reputation precedes them. We couldn't have had a better situation. So I am thrilled. I'm looking forward to the future, whether it's Amazon or whether it's whatever the proposal is, but I know the options, and the options are all good in my eyes, and it's not going to be a bunch of buildings for apartments like some people have approached me about. That's not what's going to go here. So I think we're in great shape, and I'm happy that we're going to partner with you for this site. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. O'Brien, I want to, first of all, at the outset, thank you for a very informative presentation. We spent probably an hour together a few days ago, and the thing that impressed me most is when you spoke of forty acres of open space. Like councillor Zambudo alluded to, not just a bunch of buildings jammed together to get the maximum dollar, it's something that really works for the community. I've always advocated for that commuter station in the back of Wonderland. I think we have fifty acres at Neco, we have thirty-five acres at Wonderland, and now this could be nothing but a very strong positive for the city of Revere, and I think your track record procedure and with that, I wish you good luck in whatever happens down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. You know, everybody is praising these guys, and they should. You know, having had meetings with Tom and Dino several times, knowing that this package is going to be a hundred feet away from Ward Two, and with the new hotel going up and the other residentials are going up there, I know it's going to add some residential, but it's going to be mixed use. And that's what the most exciting part is, the recreational area. I'm very excited about the recreation, and like everybody said, whether it's Amazon and/or part of your package, fine, so be it, we'll take it. But we're very excited, we look to work with you on the traffic, which is a big, big, big issue, and like it was in the past, but it's facing us again, and I look forward to working with you guys and making things better in my neighborhood, and I think it's going to work. So I look forward to working with you further on the council floor and doing what we need to make this thing happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First of all, I'd like to thank Tom for a great presentation. I just want to mention that when I got the call to, as councilors, we got called to approve this plan, that they were going to put together, you were going to put together, along with Mayor Rego and Mayor Walsh, and they wanted me to look at the letter that, and I said, I don't have to, after meeting with you two times, and I know I'm in good, the city is in good hands, and the council's in good hands, and I got faith in the mayor, that I agreed. I think it's a no-brainer, although I'm not putting my, all my hope into Amazon, but I, knowing after talking with you, that whatever comes up, if we don't get Amazon, I'm sure we're going to get a great deal there. And when we sat down and had our discussions, you listened. You asked good questions, and I think I answered your questions, and I think we're going to work together as the mayor, the council, and with you, that we're going to have a successful, something successful there. And again, whenever you want to meet, I'm always there. And again, thanks for the presentation. Thank you.
Councillor Moravito?
Thank you. Property is currently sitting at a prime location. It's a prime piece of real estate. After meeting with you a couple of times, I'm very confident that it's going to be utilized to its full potential without having residential units there. Also, I think this is what the city needs to help brand itself, and I think it will bring jobs and help our city prosper in the future. So I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. As everybody knows, I'm the ward councillor of the Suffolk Downs property, and I've sat with Tom O'Brien and Dino probably a dozen times, and we've talked about many things. It's very refreshing to know that you can sit with the developer instead of a lawyer and talk about certain things that they're going to accomplish. I just want to say that I'm very, very, very happy that you're the developer, you came into the city, you trusted Revere and came into the city, and I think it's going to be a wonderful asset to Revere, and it will change the stigma and the reputation that we have had for many, many years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. As well as the ward councillor, I've had the opportunity to meet with the developer, and I must say that this is a great project, and our city is lucky to have you here. I think that this is exactly what we're missing as a city. We need more commercial development. We need restaurants, we need shops, we need places for our residents to go to enjoy the city of Revere and everything that it has. And I think that, as we spoke about many times with this property, it really has the potential to be a bigger gateway to our city. It comes right in from Boston and can welcome people into Beauchamp, to the beach, and really utilize all of the things that our city has to offer, and developed correctly as this developer envisions. We have a ton of potential for this, so I'm looking forward to seeing it. By looking at the slideshow today, you can tell that they listen, all the things that we spoke about in our meetings that I'm sure my colleagues in the council have echoed, they're listening to. We asked for retail, we have retail. We asked for open space, we have open space. We asked for it to feel like a neighborhood, and it looks like it's going to feel like a neighborhood, and I think that is what our city is looking for. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing more.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rotendo?
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. O'Brien. I have several questions, and the first one has to do with, you said it was going to be a transit-oriented development versus you have, obviously, a pitch for Amazon. At this point, what is your retail versus residential component in this preliminary idea?
The retail is, retail's at least five-hundred-thousand square feet. Much of the housing is located in Boston, but it looks like so far the housing, you know, we're trying to sort through the final numbers on it, and a lot of it depends on where Amazon wants to place its certain buildings, you know?
So...
But we really want the retail to be a key part, a key piece of this.
So with that said, that's less than five percent of your entire project. You have...
Yeah, but these are retail, remember, councillor, this is retail that is neighborhood retail, right? So we, the last thing we want to do is big-box retail. We don't want another Target store, we don't want another super, what we want is small retail that is neighborhood-oriented. So a five-thousand-square-foot restaurant is a very big restaurant. A ten-thousand-square-foot restaurant is a huge restaurant.
You have four million square feet of land that you're talking about...
Yes.
...without your F A I, without going up.
But if you take the five-hundred-thousand square feet of retail, okay, that's, how many restaurants is that? Is that fifty restaurants, or is that, that's a lot of restaurants. It's a huge amount of retail. So we feel really good about where we are from a retail perspective.
And residential component?
And that's about right, in terms of a development of the size and the percentages, that's about right.
And a residential component?
So right now, we're still going through the numbers of it, because a lot of it is, you know, where we end up with Amazon, but what we tried to do is compare the potential of where the residential component might be, much of it being in Boston, and compare it to where other residential projects have been. So for example, six-fifty Ocean, which is a new project that was just completed near the beach, my belief is that that's on one-point-nine acres, and it's a little more than three-hundred units, so it ends up being, I think, about a hundred and seventy units or so per acre. And so for us, we believe we're around fifty or fifty-two units per acre with all the open space and all the retail. So we're way less than other projects that have been recently built in Revere, and much of that housing, frankly, will probably be in East Boston. Remember, councillor, that the site is a hundred and sixty acres, and over a hundred and ten, maybe a hundred and twenty of those acres are in Boston. So the bulk of the housing will end up being in Boston.
So that said, the waterfront square is what you're talking about?
Yes.
That building at six-fifty is part of the waterfront square, a transit-oriented development...
Yes.
...in which there's supposed to be a million square feet of property there?
I don't know that, councillor.
Well, I do, because I was part of it, and...
I'm talking about what was built, so far.
Right, right. So the majority of it was supposed to be commercial.
So that means there'll be more units, I guess, per acre than what I stated.
So, you know, my concern is, I'd like to kind of get a fast number on to how many residential units are going to be within this project, because...
We haven't yet. I'd be happy to sit with you and go through this. I'd love to do that.
I think the public would like to know as well. I mean, this is part of the process, so you don't need to speak to me privately. This is an open forum, that's why we want to have the people know what we're getting...
This is the second time we've been in an open forum. I'm happy to come back time and time again. As you can see, we frankly, we enjoy this kind of engagement, so we're...
It's important.
I'm happy to come back, whenever the council would like to have us back, I'll come to these public forums anytime you'd like.
And do you have a design plan at present or to fluid?
Yes. No, well, you can see in the Amazon proposal, which is online, there's a website with the Amazon proposal, you can see basically the drawings, the basic design. It's very simple schematic drawings, because it's early.
Right.
The Amazon RFP came out on September the seventh, so to put all that work together in five or six weeks was a lot of work, as you would imagine. So we worked hard to put it together. Those schematics are available, they're publicly available. People can go online to the Amazon...
How can we get that linked to the city website so that people can see that?
I think it's on the city website as well, mayor.
Where is it so that people know?
So the bid that we put in is on the city website, it's available.
So is it like in the front page? Because I couldn't see it, that's why I'm asking.
I haven't checked the front page today, but I'm pretty sure that when we put it out, we put it prominently on our homepage.
Okay, thank you. And...
I think if you, you can, I'm trying to think, yeah, either city website. We'll make sure, councillor, that you can have it, and we're happy to make it available as well, so...
Right, because I know that we're in competition with Newark and Atlanta, which are probably the biggest challenges that we have.
New York, Boston, Atlanta, a lot.
And so, I mean, anything that we can do as a city to fall with that cause, you know, I'm a thousand percent behind it. I mean, having Amazon here is probably the next best thing to slice bread, so to speak.
But we agree with you. I mean, we understand that, you know, you have to be careful you get what you wish for, right? So at the end of the day, what you really want to be sure is hold fast to your basic principles. So that's why I said to you, you know, we identified early on that twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of this site could be available for open space. That's forty acres, that's a lot. So whatever we looked at, whatever Amazon was coming in to do, we said to ourselves, let's hold on to the open space, we've got to make sure we hold on to the retail, because frankly, Amazon was looking for an opportunity to be part of a real community, a place where there would be great retail, all the things that are our part of our vision for the mixed use.
Let's see and work, yeah.
They don't want to just be in a kind of a boring corporate campus, they want to be a part of a community. So that's, their wishes are part of our vision, right? So, but we, working with you folks, right, it needs to be our vision that is still held fast to, and that's the vision that Amazon needs to fit into.
In the forty acres of developer land, is that part of also the retention area that we're going to have to deal with flooding and things of that nature?
Well, it is interesting, councillor, you know, the flooding is really, you know, when we say flooding, what we're referring to is the hundred-year flood, right?
Right.
So, there's not going, at least in our lifetime here, unless we live to 200 years old, there's not going to be a time when this part of Revere or of Austin is ever underwater, right?
We hope not, right?
We hope not, right? But the issue is that there are projected floods, you know, is there going to be a Harvey-like storm that will come to this part of Boston at some point in the next 100 years? And basically, the experts tell us you have to prepare for that. So, what we can do on this site, we can use that open space as a way to manage that water. So, as you know, from the site, if you look at it, there's Sales Creek that's already there, there's some other water pieces that are already there, and so we can use those pieces so every day for, you know, for 70 years or 100 years, the open space will be beautiful open space. On those occasions, one day, four days, five days, whenever we get a storm...
So be it.
The open space will be allowed to flood, and we'll manage the water to move it off-site. Yes, that's the key.
In your timeframe for the different phases, in your equity partner?
See, that's the other key thing, which I probably didn't mention in my opening remarks, is you have to remember, even if Amazon says yes, this is a 15-year build-out, right? So, for all of the transportation improvements that need to happen, for all the other things that need to, that people are contemplating, it's a 15-year timeframe. So, we don't need to make the transportation improvements that we can see down the road, we don't need to make those today, right? So, but, you know, but for 15 years, we see this as a really steady build-out and a clear opportunity. Can I make two more points, Counsel?
Of course, please.
One is, the first phase for us, with or without Amazon, we've said this before, is over a million square feet. So, for us, the way we look at this is, we don't wanna work with you, create this beautiful plan, have all these great expectations, and then build one lonely building and hope that that starts to change expectations. We have a capital partner, a really strong group, that agrees with us that the way to put this site on the map is to put a million square feet in Phase 1 right away. And we're looking at that and saying, okay, how do we make a million square feet? That's a, you know, that's however many restaurants it ends up being. You know, it's restaurants, it's shops, it's all those pieces. It is some residential unit, but it's also gonna include the entrepreneurship center as well. That's a key part of it.
So, you're talking as an initial investment between a half a billion and a billion dollars?
Well, by the time we're all said and done, between the land acquisition and all the rest of it, there's a lot, there's probably every bit of that, yes, that's for sure. And I, can I make one other point, too?
Oh, please.
Counsel, which I failed to make, which is, the residential that we're envisioning, there's a variety of types of residential, right?
Of course.
So, we see ourselves as creating townhouses, homeownership townhouses for people, particularly along the edges of the site. We think that that's gonna be a really interesting opportunity to kinda allow...
Ownership's important.
Yeah, allow the neighborhood to kind of phase into the edges of the site. We also see that there can be opportunities for senior housing. We think there's plenty of opportunities for senior housing, and we frankly think that there can be homeownership opportunities as well. So, there again, if you look at the Assembly Row piece, Assembly Row, people walk down the street at Assembly Row, and they think of the restaurants, but there's residential above, which is rental, designed really well. They did a nice job with that, and it's performed well. But that then set the table for them to do condos and homeownership, an office piece, all those things. So, that kind of progression is...
And my last question, I do appreciate Counsel President with the leeway. As far as the ability to engage the MBTA, and obviously you have to go to the federal level, I think, on this, if I recall what happened with Mike Capuano when he was dealing with Assembly Row, is that connection between the blue line and the red line. I mean, what's the, and perhaps even, the man might have a better understanding of it as he's worked for the MBTA. What's the likelihood of that, or...
I can speak to it, and then maybe the mayor can add a little bit more. So, first of all, for us as a group, every project that we work on has an MBTA aspect to it. So, you know, at North Point, we were the ones who had to come in and assemble the pieces to allow for the Green Line extension to happen, which is now finally moving forward. At Boston Landing, we've worked on all the different pieces that have allowed the new station to be built there on the commuter rail, right? So, every, and where we are at the Government Center Garage, remember, that's the Haymarket Station, which is right underneath the garage?
Right.
So, we're involved, the MBTA leadership knows us very well, we know the MBTA leadership very well, we're deeply respectful of the MBTA leadership. Our view is, on this particular instance, this is a long-promised project, frankly, for this part of the city, for the communities that are in this part of the harbor, okay? The red line, blue line connection is a long-promised project that was part of the Big Dig obligations. It was an environmental obligation as a result of the Big Dig. It was quietly sort of pushed off to a later date, you know, by previous governors. But frankly, it's an important project. As I said earlier, it doesn't need to happen tomorrow, so, you know, we don't need to sort through how we're gonna build it or fund it or whatever tomorrow. But I think it is a question that this body should really think about, and we would really love to work with you to advocate for it.
Yeah, no, as Fred Salvucci said, he would like to connect the brains with the beach.
Yes. That's a great quote. I loved that. I didn't hear Fred say that. That's a great quote.
The brains with the beach.
And the speaker was very strong on it, I think, as you might have seen this morning or yesterday. The speaker was very strong.
So, I mean, I thank you for your response, I'm greatly appreciative.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counselor. Good points, very good points. And if I may add, this has been a really good process, just in the fruition of this project, working with the HYM Group, they've been very transparent with the City Council and the residents of Revere. Last week, I was able to attend a meeting with the stakeholders at HYM, state and local stakeholders, and the mayor of Boston, Marty Walsh. And just to see the collaboration of the city of Boston and the willingness to work with the city of Revere, we would obviously love to have the Amazon project come here, but we already, you can already tell that even if that didn't come to fruition, whatever would happen next, the unity that we have happening right now is unbelievable, and I think it's unprecedented for all of us. So, thank you very much for opening those doors for us. Appreciate it. Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Now, the thing that I would love to see is if it could be built with all union construction. Union construction is most important here. We hire local people with it, so we have to work on that.
I agree, responsible labor.
Public hearings, Council Order 17-350. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance relative to the feeding of wild animals, wildlife, and birds.
At this time, we'll open it up to any proponents, any proponents on this? Hearing and seeing none, I will close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I will close that side. Any councils wishing to speak? Any councils wishing to speak on feeding of the birds? Counselor Rotundo, any animals?
Actually, I think it's, I'd like to feed the birds. I think it's a great thing. I think we should have fowl, I think that people should have the ability to even raise chickens in their backyard. But I think there also be, there needs to be a process in which we curtail any issues regarding rodent control, which is probably one of the biggest things. I do know that a friend of mine, Nefo Cappuccio, would like to put a pig in his backyard, but that's not gonna happen. And I know he's tried to get you to do the same thing, but maybe we can get some prosciutto out of him. But anyway, that said, I'm forward.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Any other councils? All right, this, we're gonna close that side, and we're gonna refer this to Legislative Affairs.
Council Order 17-364. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance prohibiting non-medical marijuana establishments within the city of Revere.
At this time, I'll open it up to any proponents in the audience, any proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. And any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing, oh, an opponent.
Good evening. Al Terminello, 21 Eastern Avenue in Revere. Basically, I understand everything that was said here, that we already have one place that's been brought in here. The only thing I don't quite understand, and maybe I missed it, is the fact that the one place that we do have, and you swore that there won't be another, but he does have a double-sided license that he can change over from medical marijuana to recreational marijuana at any given time. Basically, I just wanted to know where the mine site was on that when you gave it to them. I mean, you gave an open license to do anything you want with drugs. I've been brought up in the community, I've been in law enforcement, I've been in both sides of everything. Everybody knows that there's been fighting this in the city for our kids, we fought about it, what casinos are bringing in, the set, the basic thing that the state actually put it on, a thing was unbelievable to be voted on, so it passed, obviously. But we gave an open-ended license to somebody that can change it at any given time. And I know they're gonna say, oh, they won't, but history has shown itself that if you are the only game in town, you're gonna play that ace. Because if we're not gonna allow anybody else in here, which I hope we don't, there's gonna be a problem, because he is gonna change that license. I almost, I mean, the odds are. So, I just wanted to know what happened, why we gave up a double-sided license like that openly and without a public say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Terminello. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. Actually, is this a part of the hearing that we can speak on, Madam Clerk?
So, this would, actually...
Can I respond to the...
Would you like to...
That's what I'd like to do.
Respond to, Mr. Terminello? Any other opponents in the audience? And for the record, Mr. Terminello, you would technically be a proponent for prohibiting non-medical marijuana?
Sorry, I didn't realize how you were stating it.
Just wanted to make sure you knew that, all right? So, any other opponents closing that side of the hearing? Any councils wishing to speak? Counselor Rotundo.
So, through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Terminello. Al, basically, this was voted on from a prior council and therefore accepted. One of my concerns right now is, to be quite honest with you, is possible legal challenges, and part of the reason why I'd like to, you know, put this in the committee for a short period of time to have both Dan and Paul Capiuzi, and perhaps maybe somebody outside, look at the legality of it. However, as crazy as this sounds, and I was shocked to even read it myself, actual marijuana use among kids is less. Isn't that crazy?
Yeah, I, you know, I understand, I know all this little...
Well, no, this is, this is from the, you know, from the CDC, and I'm just, I'm shocked to even hear it, because it's counterintuitive.
It's just low, and that we haven't in our community at all.
Al, if you're gonna speak, just come up to the... Yeah, and the other thing that I'd like to point out, Al, is that you have competitors that are going to be in Lynn as well as in East Boston. I know that there was a group that Attorney Boncory had tried to change the zoning here. I know they're trying in Winthrop to do something there. You know, one part of the argument is, everybody else around us is going to have it, and currently, believe it or not, they're delivering to Revere right now. As we speak, they're delivering from outside the city to the city.
So, as my mother used to say, if you're gonna jump off the bridge, somebody else is, you're gonna follow them over that?
This isn't about jumping off...
I mean, we need to set examples. I'm just talking about what I feel. I understand the economics, okay? I understand how everybody wants to be part of something or grab a piece of the pie. But I just felt the Revere, as far as all, wherever we've been, brought into our upbringing in this city, that we shouldn't have been part of this at all. I don't care how they bring it in, how they drag it in, or how they fly it in, I thought Revere should have set a shining example and not have this crap in the city at all.
You know what? I perfectly understand what you're saying. I'm just giving you the reality.
And I understand. I'm not giving reality, because it's all over.
Mr. Terminello, I totally agree with you, 100%, but we're just gonna make your statement, and Counsel Rotundo, we're gonna...
I wanna thank the council for your indulgence. Thank you.
I totally agree with you, though. Thank you. Any other councils wishing to speak? Permission to speak from the chair. Much like Mr. Terminello, the former council that did approve this, it was based on a law that was, that preceded the current law that was adopted a few months ago, in 2016. So, I don't necessarily think anyone knew that this was gonna happen, and that was gonna be the case, that they would be able to adopt into recreational marijuana from a medicinal marijuana standpoint. But that's my whole point, and that's why I see, I've been talking about stopping the buck here. Because in another two years, what's next? What's gonna, what are we gonna approve that's gonna happen next? So, that's why I was so staunchly against allowing recreational marijuana in Revere. We need to start taking a stand now, and that was, that's my biggest failing. So, we did let some cooler heads prevail, and this is gonna end up going to Legislative Affairs and continue throughout the process, working with our city solicitor, which, as we got last meeting, we had good clearance from. But that's exactly where I stand, Mr. Terminello and Counsel Rotundo. I think you all agree that we have to start stopping things before, you know, everything, it's all, no holds barred in 10 years from now. Thank you. This is gonna be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Council Order 17-376. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Dana Lopez and Raymond Nickerson, 428 American Legion Highway, requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Revere. They are changing lot, or requesting to change Lot Number 120, American Legion Highway, from Residential B District to the General Business District.
Mr. Attorney Cagiano?
Yes.
This is where we open up to proponents?
Yes. Counsel President, fellow counselors, Joseph Cotojia, One Sprague Street, Revere, Mass, representing the applicants. Just by way of clarification, what we're doing here tonight, hopefully, is correcting a zoning nominally. What we have is a parcel of land that's comprised of nine lots. Those nine lots were presented to the council and to the planning board previously for rezoning, and for some reason that we haven't been able to determine, eight out of the nine were confirmed to be GB lots, and that the final lot, I believe you have on application, and if not, I have copies of plans, if anybody would like one. The last lot, Lot 120, remained as an RB lot, despite the fact that it housed a commercial building, has been taxed as commercial, and has no residential use at all. This is not a, an application that is associated with any other proposal, other than to just correct this zoning issue on this one lot. As indicated, my clients are proposed purchasers of this entire parcel, and they just need confirmation that the entire parcel is a GB parcel. This building that is presently housed there, we're all familiar with, as the previous argument was docked in. It is built close to the lot line, so this is not an issue of us reaching or pushing into an otherwise residential area. And again, I know that there is a meeting before the planning board, which is apparently a new process that is undertaken. That meeting tomorrow with the planning board is to hear the exact same application as before you. There is no other proposal being made to the planning board tomorrow, or anyone, or anything proposed at this time, nothing for site plan review. Again, nothing other than just correcting what we believe to be a glitch or a miss on the zoning map. I did, when I was filing this application, met with the city clerk. She had indicated that she thought that this was already done. I met with community development, they had the same indication, that they had thought and couldn't understand why this one lot remained as RB, didn't give any indication as to why that, you know, that there would be any opposition. So, we're looking to correct that. We're, you know, obviously gonna be meeting with the planning board tomorrow, we're fine with meeting with the zoning subcommittee, and hopefully answering any other questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, this is still on the proponent sides. Any proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any councils wishing to speak?
Mr. President.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, all due respect to the applicant, what's the motive behind this? I wasn't made aware of this request could be processed. I had no knowledge that they were coming forward with this change of ordinance. I don't get it. I still am wondering why 15 days prior to an election, a zoning ordinance comes before
the city council, not giving me the opportunity to meet with the neighborhood and to address the concerns of the neighborhood for any ordinance change, no matter what the case may be. I don't care if they were going to, whatever they're going to put there. The area residents have a right to be heard. When there was a application before this body and the former owner had this parcel, I met with the neighborhood. We met at this, on-site. Every neighbor knew what was going on. They don't know what's going on now. I'm just informed this Saturday evening when I returned home from a function. I woke up Friday evening and Saturday morning, I read it. I was shocked, deceived, that an ordinance is being offered in my ward without me knowing about it, without me giving the opportunity to meet with the neighborhood, to address whatever needs might be, to alleviate their concerns as to what the possibility of the site might be or look like afterwards. I take exception to this, strong exception to this. I can't say it any clearer than this. Been in this political arena for many years, never been blindsided on the last hour prior to election. Unfair to me, unfair to the campaign workers that I have, and unfair, more importantly, to the neighborhood. I am very, very appalled by this and I just can't say it in any clear terms. I got calls from my colleagues with concern about this. What was the motive behind this 11th-hour plight? I said, I have no idea. I'm taken back by this whole process and I'm angry. I can't express it in any other way. I'm hurt. I felt betrayed. And more importantly, win, lose, or draw come November 7th, Artic Guanasso is still going to be a counselor until December 31st. And I am going to have a voice on this and I am going to be heard. So what I don't know now, I plan on attending the planning board meeting tomorrow. I, I just can't understand why I wasn't informed. Again, no disrespect to the attorney, he's doing what he's told to do and that's his job. And he does it in a good fashion, I might add. I'm just hurt by the whole process and I can't, how much more can I tell you? My dear friend Charlie Patch heard me for half an hour on Saturday night, late in the evening. So, and I apologized to him and John Powers and every other counselor that called me. They knew. If my colleagues knew this was unacceptable, they knew that it's unacceptable. Mr. President, you called me. And I appreciate every one of the calls of concern, seeing what was the motive behind this last-minute maneuvering to change an ordinance without giving me the opportunity to at least speak with my constituents and go over the plan and have a knowledge of it myself. I want to know, I want to be versed on something before I go forward with it. So again, thank you, Mr. President, for your attention to this. Thank you for your call. I appreciate it. And I know this is automatically going to a subcommittee, to which I'll be heard very, very loud and very, very clear, that my strong opposition to anything being done prior to me meeting with my constituents before we make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
I just want to confirm, this will be going to my zoning subcommittee?
Yeah, this is going to go to zoning subcommittee. So the good news is, and counsel, actually, any other councils wishing to speak? So the good news is, is there won't be anything approved and obviously there'll be ample time hopefully for you to get more of the story and also be able to give that feedback to your constituents and go through that process. So that's the good thing, is that there's nothing that's going to be approved tonight. That's why we have these open forums. But obviously Counsel Guanasso and all the councils, we like to be, to meet with the developers or any sort of projects coming forward ahead of time so we can figure out what's happening. So I'm going to refer this to zoning subcommittee.
Give the billboard ordinance subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Counselor.
Earlier this evening, several members of the city council, as well as the members of this committee, met in this chamber to discuss the language that we would use going forward to amend our current zoning for billboards. It was a very productive meeting. We're joined by Ron Champeau from the Beautification Committee, Paul Capisi, and Frank Stringi from the city of Revere, as well as many board counselors and large counselors to review this. We developed several action items from that meeting that we're going to look at going forward. That included restrictions for future billboards, how to deal with maintenance, as well as the possibility of yearly maintenance and inspection for current billboards, as well as drafting letters on behalf of the city council or members of that committee to go forward to the state and the Transportation Commission that determines billboards. I live at outdoor at the advertisement committee, to state our opposition to any new billboards in the city of Revere. So we covered a lot of ground. It was a very, very productive meeting and I want to thank Mr. Champeau from the Beautification Committee and Frank Stringi and Paul Capisi for their time today. They are going to be drafting some legal terms to make sure this ordinance is written correctly and we're going to review it during our next meeting, which will be on November 13th at 5:00 in the council chambers. I thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. Vice President, this committee met, worked hard, swiftly acted, came up with very positive solutions, long time in coming, to address the unsightly billboards that are congregated throughout our community. And I think what we have is a work in progress and I think it's certainly going to be beneficial to all of us. Now the next stage is like a little compromising, maybe to work with the current owners of these billboards to make some sort of agreements that we can reduce the amount of billboards in our city. And I think the game plan that we've set forth is really something and I commend the committee for doing such quick work so fast. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet this evening and I think many of the suggestions that were offered out were very positive. I think that this city has been, lack of a better word, I'll say plagued by the overabundance of billboards in this city for decades. And I think this is perhaps the time for the city council to stand up, as we are doing, and say no to any more billboards in the city. We just don't need them. They're unsightly. They, in some way, may be causing accidents by people looking up at these billboards as they drive through the city. It's just not a good thing and I think, as I said before, the time for action is now and I want to commend Chairwoman Janino for her positive action this evening in moving this forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Janino.
Thank you. I just had one quick comment that I forgot to mention in my report. I really do want to give most of the credit to this, to the late Counselor Bob Haas. He was really the one that put a lot of time and a lot of years and a lot of effort into making this happen. And it was through his efforts and time that we were able to do this in the council. So it's quite a testament to his legacy that his work is still going on up here. So I just want to give that credit where it's due, but I'm happy that I could be a part of the execution of it.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you. Pot and possible of this, I hope, is that we engage both the state and other partners because, as you recall, what happened with the MBTA, we did something and it wasn't honored. And perhaps Rosely Vincent and the Speaker, as well as our Senator, can possibly intervene at that level. I'm sure it's been approached already.
Thank you, Counselor. Very good point. Being part of the working group, that was definitely a topic of conversation and bringing all parties involved. And I could tell you, in the brief meeting we had today, we made a lot of positive traction and I definitely think that we'll have some billboard reform very soon. Thank you.
Communications, Counsel Order 17-377. Communication from Joseph A. Festa proposing a donation of certain parcels of land on Douglas Street for conservation purposes.
Any councils? Counsel Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is my ward and I certainly agree with the donation being offered out by Joseph A. Festa. He's done this in the past in different parcels to help the area. And certainly, it would be nice to put these aside, keep them for conservation, and make certain that the city will have open space for years to come. Good motion, good offer by a very wonderful family. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any other counselors? This is going to go to a roll call vote?
Shall the city council accept the following parcels of land for conservation purposes? Lots 203, 204, and 205 Douglas Street. Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Zambudo is absent and Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the donation has been accepted. Onto motions, Counsel Order 17-378. Motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor provide the city council with the meeting minutes of the consent decree steering meetings.
Counsel Rotundo speaks for itself. Any other counselors? Motion approved?
Counsel Order 17-379. Motion presented by Counselor Patch that the mayor requests National Grid to install a light on a pole located on Keeney Street at the corner of Squire Road.
Counsel Patch.
This speaks for itself. I was made aware of, that this procedure had to be followed at the last meeting. We had National Grid here. He had previously told me that he put a work order in, but I guess we got to go this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Patch. And the other councils? Motion to approve?
Late motion from Counselor Powers that the mayor request inspeckional services to inspect the building located at 585 North Shore Road with regard to graffiti and issue appropriate fines. This is not the first time this has occurred and this should be dealt with appropriately.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I've been driving by that building for the past week or so and the graffiti all over the building is really offensive to me and I'm sure it's offensive to the neighborhood down there. That building right now has over $200,000 in fines assigned to it. And I think, I want the building, the inspeckional services to get on there tomorrow and find them and find them and find them until they get the message and clean that up. And if they don't clean it up, then I would ask inspeckional services to hire a company to get that graffiti off of there, which they can do, actually, they can do it within a week, and lean the property for the cost of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Any other counselors? Motion to approve?
We have a late communication from the mayor relative to the construction of a playground at Harmon Park.
Would you care to read or?
Yes. First, point of information, Harmon Park-
Counsel Patch.
Thank you. Harmon Park is in North Revere for people that own Salem Street or North Revere. Thank you.
So this is in regards to the reconstruction of Harmon Park? Correct. I know this.
Can you read the communication, please?
Dear counselors, as you may be aware, the city of Revere has received funding for the reconstruction of Harmon Park on Salem Street in the amount of $331,000 from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Park Program and Community Development Block Rep Program. This first phase of this project has been awarded to Camden Construction in the amount of $232,807, which includes the construction of a new basketball court, fencing, drainage, landscaping, construction of walkways, and installation of curbing and timber edging and site prep for a new playground. The second phase involves the installation of a new playground, of new playground equipment and safety surface. The budget for the second phase of the playground is $130,813. Revere On The Move has provided $12,000 towards the second-phase playground construction, which leaves a shortfall of $20,620. So in accordance with Section 17.47.030 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, I am requesting that the city council approve the expenditure of $20,620 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund Account Number 84051. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Brian Arigo.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Frank, Mrs. Stringi, any comments?
Thank you for taking this up. Yes, this is just a request that the city council approve the expenditure of $20,620 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund. This project in North Revere, known as the Salem Street Playground, formerly known as Harmon Park, has been in the design and planning stages throughout the summer. We had numerous meetings with the Neighborhood Association up there, involved a number of planning meetings and design meetings. Counsel Patch has attended all of them. And we're trying to build a state-of-the-art park like we did at Louis Pasteur Park, Oak Island Park, and very recently Lincoln Playground in North Revere. What's up there now is just a basketball court that's falling apart and a set of swings that cannot be used. So this will give the North Revere area a state-of-the-art park and playground which they deserve. So thank you for approving this tonight.
Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just want to say, a lot of work has gone into this playground and under the direction of L. Baker, who works for the-
All right?
As far as Ellie, L. Baker, who has done several playgrounds, directed neighborhood groups to get them accomplished in the city. And as Frank said, we had the North Revere Neighborhood Group. And I want, really, to apologize. This is, I just got this notice tonight and I apologize to L. and to the members of the North Revere Neighborhood Group. I know they've been waiting for this to be accomplished and hopefully my colleagues tonight will vote for this. I'm sure they would have been, would have been here. They worked very hard. It only takes a small number of neighbors to get together and with the direction of the person like L. Baker, who makes sure things get done. It's going to be a top-notch playground and basketball court and the people in North Revere waited a long time for this to happen. And they knew we were going to, we had to put it off until the spring. And it's good that the mayor today is making this request to get the final funds for the money. Again, I want to thank the members of that group for their hard work for over, just about a year or over a year of monthly meetings, going through each phase, picking out equipment. And it looks like if you, my colleagues vote for this tonight, it looks like we're going to have a great park. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I look forward to getting my tool belt on and driving some poles in the ground for you. This is going to go to a roll call vote.
Shall the city council approve a transfer from the Community Improvement Trust Fund in the amount of $20,620 for the construction of a playground at Harmon Park? Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rotundo is absent. Counsel Zambudo is absent and Counsel Vice President Keith.
Yes. Counsel Patch, that vote yes was predicated on the hopes that when we receive the grants next year for Gibson Park and the Point of Pines, that you'll be able to help me out if we need another $20,000. Thank you.
You got it.
Little political arm twisting, I see. And any other business, Madam Clerk? Counsel Guanasso has one point to make?
Mr. Vice President, members of the council, you know, this past month, we've been celebrating or honoring Domestic Violence Month in honor of all those victims that are out there in our city and throughout the world. And I ask that we stand in a moment of silence for all those victims. Thank you.
And if I could also point out one more item, on Tuesday, November 7th, it is Election Day. I empower all Revere residents to get out and vote and make your voices heard. Have a great night. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.